Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Meeting of the school committee called a meeting toward six P M. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped. And I would ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Well, our roll call, Sam, if you could start us out?
Yep, Samantha Blaskworth.
Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Gregory Thompson.
Sarah Trilio.
Kate Lyden.
Heather Brown, Director of Curriculum.
Okay, thank you all. I have minutes for approval.
First, three regular session meeting minutes.
Actually made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Kate, discussion. Hearing none of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries three to zero. Committee and subcommittees, Kate, would you like to start?
I have nothing.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Um, I was able to attend the the family event at Mountain View School. And they welcomed families back um without their students. Uh, two days before school started and went over kind of protocols and procedures. For incoming third graders, so it was nice to be able to hear some of those highlights and to be able to um see families who are going to be entering into that school for the first time. So it was a very well-run and energized event. Um, Elaine and her staff did a terrific job welcoming those families in. Um, and then myself and Kate and um Amy were all in attendance at convocation as well. And I know we're going to speak about that more after, but it was definitely nice to be able to welcome the faculty back and the staff back and to um just see so many. Well, excited to be back for a great year here in E L P S.
Excellent, thank you so much. We have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee, seeing none, we will move right along. We have presentations. We have an update on E L P S opening for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Dear Smith. So in your packets and soon to be on screen. I just have a few slides and and this Trilio said um. Uh, last week we began what ended up being a pretty incredible week uh with convocation. So staff came back from the summer break. Um, staff obviously that works through the summer had been here planning and organizing and getting ready. And everyone uh was at Birchland um last Monday, starting around eight A M with the uh full assembly starting at eight thirty. Our guest speaker was Mister Adam Oliveri, uh who is both an entrepreneur, as he said it, a serial entrepreneur. And uh the current president of the East Long Meadow uh Education Endowment Fund. Uh, and so a lot of people know him um. And he kept it both exciting and energized throughout his uh speech. He also made it a family affair. Uh, those are his parents who uh he invited and um they got a a. Not only an introduction, but a standing ovation. And um he had many interesting stories, but one that I think is important uh and sort of sort of set the tone was that um. Not only is Mister Oliveri uh a product of the Islam Metro Public Schools, uh his parents are as well. And they have grandchildren in every one of our schools. So that that really kind of hold things together um. And in the end, you got a standing ovation. So we started strong and throughout the week, uh we continued strong. Uh, we had two days, convocation day and uh our second day before students arrived on Wednesday. Where we were working um in our buildings after convocation, getting organized, some professional development uh and making sure we were ready to go with the entire staff on Wednesday. Wednesday, we uh started to greet all of our students and we're incredibly excited. And not only uh were we excited to greet them, uh on the right there, you see that some of our students were really excited to greet their teachers, bringing them flowers. Uh, which was really cool. Uh, there's a lot more pictures, but I just did two per school. Uh, then over at Maple Shade, you had people uh coming off the bus with excitement and uh letting uh Mister Martin know. How their summer went as he was greeting him in car line. Uh, his scooter was in action all day, which uh was needed. Um, over at Mountain View, you had uh the gauntlet of teachers as you look both from the entrance, but then also down one of the corridors there. As students um started to roll in uh and everyone was upbeat and excited. Over at the um middle school, we had not only uh students coming in with energy in car line, but then I had the opportunity to um. Connect with the first advisory that Mister Pearson and Miss Ms Ajunga Andrew were running. Um, and some people are showing off uh their new fitness uh from the summer. And then at the high school, I had a chance to connect with some folks who were just coming in uh prior to the bell. Uh, you see uh both our administrator and um parking lot duty people out there in the cart. But then a few of our uh high schoolers who are coming in just to beat that bell that was about to ring. Um, and you see Mister Page down there welcoming uh folks both coming in from the parking lot, but also uh people are getting out of uh car line there. All in all, um, we were able to have not only a great week with staff and then students as they return. The excitement and the energy was apparent throughout the week. And we were, as you know, were able to overcome even um the unique happening at high school where we had a power outage. On the first day with our students, um knocked out for about two hours, not the entire school as rumor may have it. But uh about half the school and um the high school staff and the students really did a sick job. Uh, coming up with an alternative plan and we just shifted and classrooms that were going to be open. Because of either a duty or a prep block, we utilized them if they had power. And we shifted into the lunch block a little bit sooner than um expected. Power came back on, went out somewhere just after nine, and it came back on somewhere just after eleven, like about a two-hour window there where half the building was without power. But uh everybody did a great job coming through that and we did not lose not only our our energy, but we didn't lose, more importantly, the day. So great, so just seeing that ability to overcome challenge and that was actually one of the themes in convocation was that challenges will happen. And the ability to think through and overcome them is within all of us. And I think actually E L P S does it exceptionally well, so that was a great example. Uh, and I utilized that actually uh later in the week on Friday, as we turned to the calendar to September, I just reminded staff of that. Their ability to um candle just an incredible amount of change and challenge on a daily basis without even realizing it. So we are energized, we're back and we're ready to make it a great year. Uh, this this week's challenge may be weather. So let's see what that brings us. What?
Yeah.
Always do like such a terrific job of like identifying um previous alum to come back and speak. I think that the timing of all the individuals I've seen has really been, you know, uncanny and they all bring such a flair and an energy and. It really excites the faculty because they're hearing from one of their own. And it's such a nice way to launch the academic year by looking back at a product of the school system and being able to see where they are now. And I just think it's a really nice personal touch that um Islam metal does in terms of their convocation event. So I think that's that's great and Adam did not disappoint as well.
He did not.
Great.
He did. Uh, I said that he I thought he was going to bring the energy and and he did.
How's transportation been?
I think it's been pretty good. Um, there have been calls that have come in, but all the situations have been rectified. And L P V E C always, you know, work so collaboratively with us. Um, we don't have any complaints about that at all. Um. So yeah, I think things are okay. Are you hearing anything different? Oh, that's good.
Have we seen the electric buses yet?
I haven't personally seen it, but I would like to.
Are they here? Are they?
I believe they're here.
You're not here yet?
I think um, I don't know that for a fact, but I I don't think the last we heard that uh they had arrived. Um, but they were installing the chargers and that type of thing at all yards.
Great. Check on that arrival.
Actually, along those lines, um, if the late bus, will the schools, the high school and the middle school be communicating that to families directly, like the procedure for which that happens and?
So it's a great question. Um, we're hoping to start the late bus probably mid to late September.
Okay.
But we uh have a question out to the L P B C and maybe even more specifically to the districts that run late buses. Uh, what have they found to be the best process?
Okay.
For how students report to the late bus, you know?
Gotcha.
Um, and how they route it. Because um I would think it'd be challenging, but I I could be wrong to route it in such a way that every day you're just doing a a unique route.
Yeah.
Um, but that could be the way that uh it seems to be working in Agawam and uh West Springfield. Uh, and so we have that question out to them and we're working on that.
But eventually the communication will come from.
Probably come from this office.
Oh, from your office, okay. I just know fa- some families had tuned in for the meeting and had asked like what the process and procedure will be as that moves forward for kids who are going to stay after and utilize that.
So I think from the student standpoint, um, what they'll probably need to do and the buildings may work this internal process. They're either going to get a pass from the um advisor or teacher with whom they stayed. Um, that will be to the late bus and that will allow them to get on. Um, what we need to figure out is the routing.
Okay.
I am assuming they'll have to be bus students?
No, we hadn't.
We haven't really, no.
Okay, yeah.
That's a very good point.
That's a, yeah, that's a great question. We had, given that it's um. A sort of a trial run, we had not uh. Cool, put that parameter on it.
And I I did get feedback from two of the four districts that I reached out to um so far. I'm sure the others will get back to me soon too. I'm cautiously optimistic, but um again, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, right? Because it's already been and how successful has it been? And um both of them do it a little bit different. One has uh certain drop-off points, so it's closest to the houses and and uh there are no addresses given. I I think it's more just the student's name, but no address. And you pick your spot where you get dropped off, that's closest to your home. And the other district does it a little bit different where they do give um the student name and address and they route it that driver um according to where the the students are to get them almost close to their home. So again, we're trying to figure out what's best for us and um and the interest that that hopefully we get with with this.
I was saying, I'm sure the amount of students who actually utilize it might determine which method.
Right, so um so we're still ironing out all of that. And I'm going to say it's probably going to end up being the end of September closer, right? Yeah, to be realistic.
Yep.
Okay. Good on opening, all set?
Yeah, good.
Great, we'll move forward on the update on the M S B A feasibility study in the Summerville High School Building Project.
Okay, um, so as you know, from our last update, uh we're moving along. We're firmly in schematic design. Uh, actually, in our last um building committee meeting, we voted to submit the entire um schematic design package. Uh, and so that went off to the M S B A on the twenty-fifth, I believe, of August. Um, so that has brought us into much more specific renderings and drawings. Uh, and now we've gotten into um really looking at the materials that will go into the actual new building, outside, inside, and so forth. Uh, and so these are some of the newest renderings. Uh, so this would be a look from obviously the sky, uh looking at the entire campus. So you see all the new fields that would be put in place to the west of the building. Um, you see the existing athletic field and you see how the what would be our parking lot and the horseshoe will be rearranged, although it will still will have. Um, sort of a horseshoe in front of the main entrance coming off Maple, uh and you still will have parking that uh down towards Saint Michael's where there would be another entrance. Probably will flip-flop where cars are entering and where buses are entering. Um, and so that loop down towards the um bottom here of the building would be where buses right now, we think, are are going to be going. This gives you both an aerial view, another perspective, but also gives you a look at the different um sides of the building. So the lower left would give you a look at what the front of the building would look like. Um, and then the upper right gives you an idea of what the back of the building would look like as you exit the cafeteria. If you were to walk right through and then um over here where you see the bikers, now it'd be great if actually we we did when we built this, uh have more biking. Um, coming into that loop um on the other side of the uh entrance. This gives you an idea of what the interior, um at least the, if you were heading through the main doors in towards the cafeteria. It would, you would have that grand staircase that you see there in the center. And then off to the right, you would start to head into more of the eating area of the school. But that's more or less where you would have what we've been calling sort of the heart or the hub of the building. Um, and then above that, you would have our media center. The uh lower right gives you an idea of how classrooms could be set up. We have uh one thing we do have to um continue to do is get into what furniture we may be purchasing. Um, we do know budgets now. And actually Mister Page, I believe in two weeks is going to be going to, um, I believe it's an M S B A sponsored sort of furniture. I don't know if orientation is the right word, but um a way to start looking at um how purchasing happens. Um, what some of the trends are in terms of classroom furniture and so forth. Uh, and so the design team is also going, I think Mister Page is going to go um and certainly uh. If others want to go, we can offer that invitation up to members of the uh school building committee. It'd be our first run at that type of um real specific look at furniture and and how the M S B A does it. And I think one of the questions, Mister Thompson, that you had asked is, you know, are there ways to um continue to sort of hone in? And maybe um be more effective with cost as you're purchasing certain things, and this would be one of them. They're consistently looking at ways to both view value of furniture you're buying, but also give you power of maybe buying in bulk. And so one of the things that uh they have started to do is try to connect districts that are purchasing. Uh, you know, if they're at the same time in their project where they might be able to purchase and then you can purchase in greater bulk. This was one of the biggest um changes which uh we're really excited about. So this is a chart that was presented back um at some of our earlier community forums. Um, and definitely uh May nineteenth, excuse me, May eighteenth, which was uh, I think, the last public forum that we had before the end of the year that was held up in the library. And it gave a breakdown of where we thought we were uh at preferred schematic report. And so the the bold numbers are the ones that um are probably ones to hone in on, especially at the bottom. Uh, we thought that we were going to be around a hundred and seventy-seven million and actually we're about a hundred and seventy-seven five as our overall budget. But the two numbers below that are really important, um, given that. At that time, we thought our M S B A reimbursement was going to be somewhere between fifty-five million and fifty-seven million. Um, and now we think it's going to be higher because of some of the green points that uh we are, we hope to receive. Um, and we think we will receive, uh we've had some back and forth um emailing with the M S B A. I don't know that we can claim it in the vote language that is going to um the town council for their uh motion to raise an appropriate. Appropriate the funding for the building, but we do feel that once the M S B A board um votes to approve everything that we've done. We will get those green energy points. And so what does that mean? Well, at preferred schematic report, we were thinking that the town share was going to be somewhere around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-two million. Now we're thinking, as you look down towards the bottom of this slide, we're thinking that. The M S B A's grant may go up um closer to sixty-three million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. And therefore reducing the town share to roughly a hundred and fourteen, three hundred, a hundred and fourteen million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So that was one of the most exciting um new elements that came out of the work that's been done in August. Uh, and so although estimating if that percentage won't go into the vote language. That's the, in our next few community forums, that's what we'll be talking about.
Great.
But that brings us to communications update. Starting tomorrow, they'll be at Maple Shade for their open house. And so we will have a table with some of the new drawings and renderings of what the building now is becoming. Um, but we'll also have some of this information in terms of pamphlet uh or in the style of a pamphlet form update. And uh we'll proceed to be at all the open houses that are listed up there. And then we have a community forum here at the high school on the twenty-first, five-thirty tour. Um, if people have not toured the building before and then six P M forum in the cafeteria. And then we'll do it again in October, um, same timeframe. And any new information that we can bring from the September twenty-first forum, we will bring to that October nineteenth. And. Couple important dates that are upcoming in terms of new things. The twelfth, we will have the um vote language and ballot question reviewed at the town council. And they have both uh the language that's been moved by the M S B A and reviewed by both the attorney for the town and by bond counsel. They have it for the school and hopefully by the end of the week, they will have it for the pool project as well. And so they'll have both and then at that meeting, there'll be a presentation by bottom counsel around um bonding and funding a project such as this. And on the fifteenth next week, um, we hope to have that vote by town council to raise and appropriate and place these ballot questions. On the November seventh ballot for the town to then vote on the question regarding a debt exclusion for funding this project and the pool project. So a lot's going to happen between now and not only September fifteenth, but now and November seventh. Uh, it'll be quite a, quite a lot of activity and hopefully a lot of information that can be generated for the town and um. Mister Mackey, I know I've said this at um other meetings, but uh he's been incredible in helping us vamp our website. So on the website, it's a little bit more streamlined and um he also is uh getting the word out um just through L C A T. Um, what I would refer to as news, but their L C A T videos um in terms of just, you know, when is the vote? What is a debt exclusion uh vote? Um, and you know, a little bit more about the project. So thank you, Mister Mackey.
Welcome.
Question, Pam? With that.
That's, I didn't want to keep it at the forefront of everyone's night.
There's some good press in the reminder this week.
And the videos are terrific and they're getting a strong showing on TV as well. Great.
Okay, all right, we're on our way. Okay, moving right along, we have an eight, uh we have the fiscal year twenty twenty-three fourth quarter report from the Assistant Superintendent.
So in your packet, you will see uh the fourth quarter financial report. And just a reminder, this is final for F Y twenty-three as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. You turn page five, that's where the spreadsheet is uh at the top section are your salary side accounts. And uh as you make your way down, you'll see some have balances and some have um minor deficits in it, um such as uh. The clerical, we had some unanticipated clerical overtime that was needed. Uh, we had um that line there that says a code of speech, retirement cust- uh custodian um subs. That really was retirement funds there that that's in that deficit. Um, and uh custodial overtime, they got a few uh medical leave of absences and um. Overtime, extra overtime there, so you'll see that that there is in the negative. Um, most of them are all healthy and the bottom line is is really what matters here. So um just to let you know there, the the salary side rolled over a hundred and forty-one thousand, seven twenty-two. And on the expense side on the bottom of the sheet, again, you're going to see some uh positives and some negatives there. The contracted services are the third item down is in a negative and that's really due to um, there were many more special ed contracted services needed um from the prior year. There there just were, there was a lot that happened in um special ed this year. Um, the education supplies, uh so between the the classroom supplies and also athletic supplies are lumped into that line item. So uh bulk of that was really athletic so that we could help them out. Um, so on the bottom uh for the expenses, that one's a negative of twelve thousand, three twenty-two. So overall, what we rolled over uh to the town's general fund was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Are there any questions? Yeah.
Have we left them negative before like that? The uh available balances at the end of the fourth quarter?
Well, there's so much that's out of my control.
Yeah.
The um, so it it happens.
That's okay.
There's a little bit more here, but again, it's the bottom line that is really what matters. I'd just like to show you for transparency purposes where the money really went. And if you're curious, last year we rolled over um to the general fund, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, so this year a hundred and thirty shy. The next page?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, page six is the um the grants on the top section. You can see that all of the grants have uh basically been expended except the S R three grant, which we talked about uh during the year. And we did roll over one point seven million dollars there. Um, so we do have to reevaluate our plan and and make sure that we're on target for that, that we might need to make some. I'm pretty sure we are going to meet, need to make some adjustments because uh there were some changes with curriculum uh purchases. Um, the grant will only allow us to um, we were hoping that we could go out uh more years for the software purchases. And correct me if I'm wrong, um Heather, we have, we can only go out like one year beyond the grant. So if the grant ends in September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, we can only go beyond one year. So that's September of two thousand twenty-five, so we needed to be cognizant of that. And um so again, we're going to have to reevaluate that, we're going to be bringing things back.
How do we normally fund those licenses?
We.
But for curriculum renewal?
Some of them, but we don't normally uh try to extend on this number of years.
Budgeted uh.
Been going year to year and you can.
Significant amounts.
Significant discounts.
Go more than a year. We budget for a year.
Oh, is that we're trying to go more than a year?
Right.
Yes. Yeah. Sometimes if you can take a five-year contract.
Right, you contract for three to five years, it gives you.
Tens of thousands.
Right.
Yeah. But then we don't have in the operating budget.
Which is, which is something that we were talking about, yeah. So you do.
Clarify, you're absolutely right.
Right.
Another one of those darn scripts.
Try to avoid them.
Yeah, good.
Uh, let's see, so the um I D E A grant um rolled over seventeen thousand, nine twenty-six. And that's really because of um equitable services that is a new component with the I D E A grant. And it has to do with like the um, the private schools or the homeschooled um students, a certain allocation. And I think for our grant was about twenty-seven thousand dollars, it's not so easy to expand those funds. Um, we we reach out, you know, Michael for debt reaches out and um we can only do so much. So most of this, um, we're still finding out, I'm anticipating that we're probably going to have to return that back to the state. I don't know that for sure, but I'll keep you posted on that. Again, equitable services is something um that came about, I think, with the state being audited and they uh, they made some changes to the grant to ensure that that those folks were taken care of. So um, as you.
Do you be families that are living in town but have chosen to appeal schools or other private schools where still um.
Responsible.
Responsible. Responsible for providing any type of special education support?
And so we have had a lot of those students coming in for for speeds or here, so
Younger students, yep.
But twenty-seven thousand dollars was a lot to expend, so that's a work in progress, and I'll keep you posted on that. We still had a couple of the private grants there that rolled over. I am working with those folks to try to get those expended as soon as possible. So that's where your grants ended up. The bottom section is your revolving accounts, which, just as a reminder, those roll over from one year to the other. The first column there is where we ended the prior year and what was rolled over, and then you have the column of receipts, and then what was expended. And then the current balance means what is rolled over into F Y twenty-four. So uh, let's see, what did I want to remind you about? The athletic stadium rental, I just wanted to remind you that we did expend twenty-eight thousand dollars was used for resurfacing of the track to kind of partner with community preservation, I believe, so that's why that has come down so much. Tuition revolving account, it's a little over halfway down there. We are funding in F Y twenty-four, a pre-K teacher and two pre-K paras out of those funds.
Those are, we're not spending more funds in there, or we are, no, we're not.
You, you
Yes. Yes.
For your partners.
For the
For the peer partnership.
Peer partners.
Yep.
And there was a change in the tuition?
There was. Yep. And again, that's still, you know, every year it's going to be analyzed, right, to make sure we we got it right, and if we need to make any changes, so Renee's on top of that as well as Michael for debt, they really partnered well with that program. Circuit breaker. F Y twenty-four, so, okay. The revenue that came in was one point five million dollars. That in itself is telling you how much special ed had increased, right? Because it's e- each year, it just keeps getting higher and higher. So Michael for debt does the the claim and puts in for eligible expenses, which just as a reminder is four times the per pupil foundation. I think it's getting close to fifty thousand dollars. So it's those expenses that go over and above that fifty thousand dollars to whatever it is. And we are going to get seventy-five percent reimbursement. I'm hearing good news about that for F Y twenty-four, and that is what we received for F Y twenty-three as well. So that one point five million dollars there does include some extraordinary relief that came in. The extraordinary relief must be expended in the year that you get it. So it was like one million, well, the the full amount there, the current balance, one million ninety thousand basically is what we rolled over, and it's within the, because we can carry over one full year's circuit breaker expense, I mean, I'm sorry, revenue, except the extraordinary relief. Does that make sense? And we got like the like three hundred thousand dollars.
That's why we're at the
Yes, exactly. So the one million ninety is what we must expend in this current year. I anticipate we're probably going to be spending more like one point three million, if I had to put a number to that right now. I believe so. Again, it's always changing, so that can change.
We get extraordinary.
Right now, we could, we could get extraordinary relief, but that's
Apply for it every spring. Oh, yeah, we've always applied for it, we've just never received it in the past.
I believe what qualifies that is is in the current year. You have expenses, I think it's twenty-five percent over what it was the prior year, then you can put in a claim, and then they take a look at all the claims across the state and try to divvy out as much money as they can to help because they're recognizing what is happening, that, you know, special ed, the the issues are increasing and that the districts need more support with that. So in F Y twenty-four, I am expecting, Michael for debt did the the claim, and we are expecting one point seven million dollars in reimbursement for F Y twenty-four. Transportation, I want to remind you that most of that balance there that is in June is really money that we collected for this year's transportation, just because we try to get it before everybody closes out for the summer. So I will be encumbering that for, to offset the transportation cost. You'll see the bulk of that being expended. School lunch, that's a nice, healthy balance there. That's where she ended up for the year. Lori will be doing a full update for you at the next school committee meeting on the eighteenth. We've let her know some of the questions and, you know, concerns maybe you guys had, and she's going to give you all that information as well as an update for large ticket items that she has expended over the summers. There was a big freezer project over at Burchlam Park, and it actually, has it even come to conclusion, Gordon, or is that still going?
No, it should have at the end of the last week.
Okay.
Totally hooked up.
Yeah.
If anything, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah. So she'll give you an update on that. School choice, you can see that we've got a healthy balance there. We started to do school choice, I think it was F Y twenty-one was our first year that you voted, and I Yeah.
Third year, right?
Third year.
Yes, so it was for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, right? So that makes sense. So what I see is, I believe that we have forty-two total students. There is a five thousand dollar school choice amount that comes to a district, that's the base amount, so at minimum, we will receive two hundred and ten thousand dollars in addition in this this year here. There is a special ed component on top of school choice, on top of the five thousand dollars. Again, it's a formula that each of the directors of student services do, working with the clerical here, so Samantha's been a big role in that to to get in all of the, you know, O T, P T, any, anything, all these services, and then there's a formula behind the scenes. So it could be another five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen for any student with special ed needs that.
Is that the hundred and three difference? Through to the three thirteen?
That probably is.
It's that much?
It could be, yes. I could get the breakdown for you for the next
Well, it must be, right? Because that's the only way we get receipts, yeah.
That's correct, is the five thousand dollars.
We should start to talk about that account.
And what to do, yeah, because it absolutely, start to build a program perhaps. I think Michael for debt has some good ideas. I think he's been talking to our Mr. Smith a lot of times, so
Yeah, if we don't come up with a plan, others will.
Yeah. So overall, just a reminder here, I'm very pleased with the F Y twenty-three financial outcome. We were able to return one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars to the town's general fund, and this will help the town significantly. We were also able to carry over grants and revolving funds that will help the school department through the next fiscal year. Any other questions? No. You're welcome.
We're going to look at the technology. Well, right, when are we going to test that? It's getting healthy as well. Insurance, yeah.
Yeah, well, because he wanted to evaluate if we needed to possibly reduce the fees, it's still working, so I can talk to Ryan about perhaps maybe an update on that.
Well, yeah. If the receipts are twenty-one and we spend fourteen, I mean, we're not that far off. The balance is getting there, even if we reinvested that. I don't know.
Okay, we'll get an update for you.
Okay, cool. Hey, any other questions, thoughts?
My screen.
I will stop sharing the screen. I was just doing a placehold.
I'll take a moment to accept the order of the report, please.
I move to accept item five two, one, F Y twenty, twenty-three, fourth quarter report as presented.
It should be made by Kate.
Second.
Second by Sarah, discussion. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those phones nay, carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm going to give you some updates on curriculum and instruction and assessment and professional development as they all go together. We're in some exciting times, as Ms. Blair said, we had grant funds, both competitive grants and S R funds that are, were both designed for a variety of things, but the the, one of the components of S R grants is making sure we're getting high-quality instructional materials in the hands of the teachers. That's a push from Desi, and also to make sure that there's high-quality professional development to support that. So, you know, the reason why is because if teachers are not spending time curating content, they can actually focus on instructional planning. And we've also been building structures and in training folks on how to use their common planning time to really utilize that time to plan well for instruction and work with each other to do that. So we've purchased licenses, consumables, and also non-consumables, so things that were going to last for a long time, like books. So I I think that's going to be something that we'll be able to sustain even after S R. But we are trying to use the S R funds as best we can to make sure we're utilizing them for the future. Um, a lot on this slide, this is actually exactly what we shared with all the elementary teachers. But just to give you an update, we are in year two of our foundations implementation, and foundations really helps with the word analysis part of literacy instruction. In additional, we have, and that's from K to three. Hegarty, we've, this is officially our second year, although a lot of teachers started using that earlier, and that's for phonemic awareness. We are in our second year of Witten Wisdom Implementation for K to five. That's the language comprehension, all the background knowledge and content that kids need to be able to comprehend what they're reading after they're able to decode what they're reading. And although some teachers have started, we will be beginning this year to implement geodes, which are decodable texts that are aligned to what they're learning in foundations, but also aligned to what they're learning in Witten Wisdom in terms of content. So it's an extra, it's really great that it's all connected, and that really helps kids to practice all the skills that they are learning in that foundations. And then illustrative math is, this is our first official year, K to five, although we've kind of been rolling this out, knowing that trying to implement a lot of different things. You know, Desi gives us all this money to to do this, right, but it's hard for people to actually implement things well. So we really created a a slow rollout, and so almost all the grades have had some level of introduction to illustrative math, and this will be the year that all teachers K to five will be utilizing that for math instruction. I'm going to move on to the high school and the middle school, but if you had questions about now. About to throw a lot of information at you. Okay, so I kind of skipped the middle school and went straight to the high school, but we'll come back to the middle school. This is the year, I'm going to jump down to social studies history, because this is year three now of History Alive. They're utilizing that both in the middle school and the high school, and so it's really exciting to have that consistency using it for civics, for their U S history, and also for their world history classes. This is the second year of using utilizing Adios curriculum for Spanish from sixth to twelfth grade. And what's great about that is that there's also been opportunities in terms of tying in the professional development for the entire department to attend the Mass Foreign Language Association's proficiency academy. So the Adios is the 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 high-quality curriculum, but they're also getting, and they're going to continue to get more professional development in how to use, how to instruct in the way that Desi is really trying to get us to instruct for modern languages. And then math, this is the year two for reveal math. And so that is for algebra, one, two, and geometry, and then we're going to start investigating new materials for the higher-level mathematics courses that we offer. And E L A and science are both up in curricular renewal cycle this year, so it'll be exciting for E L A to investigate new materials for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and as well as the science teachers to do the same. So it's exciting that our core subjects are all going to have eventually these high-quality instructional materials in their hands. For Burchlam Park, yes, please.
When we look at science in particular, we had engaged in a pilot, hadn't we, at the middle school?
So the middle school, actually, it's not even a pilot anymore, I'm about to talk about that, but I'll put it up here. So this is their third year with Open Sci Ed.
Was it a grant?
It was a grant.
That was it, sorry.
And that grant is very heavy on the professional development, and we have somebody who kind of really monitors whether we're going, so it's been great because people are getting a lot of professional development. So I talked to the department head here, Kate Walland, for the science, and so on our P D day, one of the options for folks, and I the science high school teachers, were offering taste of Open Sci Ed, so they can kind of get an idea of it, because it would be wonderful if we could have six to twelve utilizing the same.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, just curious if there was any possibility of kind of hearing from Burchland as to what is potentially working around some of these materials, so that if there was the possibility, and it made sense for continuity between Burchland and the high school. Yes. If it made sense and held to the integrity of the stance, like, just a question.
There's a lot of interest, and then, of course, there's also Project Lead the Way that we've utilized for engineering at the high school, and they have other materials too for like biotechnology and things like that, but the first thing, one of the of the materials that we'll be looking at is Open Sci Ed. So for Burchlam Park, the E L A department actually spent a ton of time creating their own curricular materials, so at this point, they're going to just continue to revise their curricular materials and for getting high-quality instructional materials at this point. Math will be in year two of illustrative math, so we now have a K to eight pathway for illustrative mathematics. And the eighth-grade civics has a new curriculum that's aligned to the eighth-grade civics, which is great, because we are we're going to be taking the civics M C A S this year as the field test, and then it will go into effect officially the following year. And then the History Alive for a long time before the mass standards shifted, the sixth grade and the seventh grade content were kind of separate, and now what Massachusetts has done is kind of mixed them, so it's almost like a year one, year two. And so they are using, it's it's kind of year one for them, even though they've been using History Alive in the way that Massachusetts standards have have asked them to do that, so that will be new for them this year. And like I said, Open Sci Ed, this is the third year for science, it's very exciting, and year two also for Spanish. One of the things when we focus on universal access is when we're giving these high-quality instructional materials, one of the things that makes them high-quality is that all kids have access to grade-level material, so kids are not getting things that are at a lower level because, for example, they're struggling with decoding. So in order to make sure all kids can access, we have a couple of different programs that were, are available for teachers to use in the classroom with students. One is Learning Ally, and that provides, it's kind of like Book Share, but it's much looser in terms of who gets to utilize it, which is great. So that provides audio versions of of books for all students, and they're actually read by authors, so and actors, I should say, so they're not dry. And also provides the the digital text for them as well. We've been using Google Read and Write for a long time, that allows kids to use technology both for reading PDFs and other things, and also speech to text for writing. We have Orbit Note, which has a lot of the same things, but that's for PDFs. And this year expanded Brainin' Camp to K to eight, so those are digital manipulatives. Obviously, school classrooms will have hands-on manipulatives as well, but again, to provide access that are using manipulatives on the computer, obviously, they, you know, are doing a lot of things in terms of assessment on the computer, so that's a great add-on. And speaking of assessments, in June, Desi just passed new regulations for universal screeners. Thankfully, we started this process last year, knowing that we were going to need to do this, and also because we wanted more information than the iReady was giving us. So we already have been doing for K one and two phonemic awareness assessments, alphabet knowledge assessments. The rapid automatized naming is a screening basically to see almost a processing speed, and it's a possible indicator for dyslexia. That's where all of this came from, is the dyslexia guidelines. And so the only change this year is that while the kindergarten does it two times a year, grade one, two, and three needs to do it at least in the beginning of the year. And so they will also have word and passage reading, and the reading comprehension is covered by iReady. So while reading comprehension is not necessarily required by Desi, we have been using iReady, and so that does provide some information for us.
Where are the other metrics coming from? What are we using?
So right now, for grade three, so, okay, before we started last year at at Meadowbrook, we used Hegarty phonemic awareness, and we used the Quick Phonic Screener.
Okay.
We're going to continue to do that this year at Meadowbrook, because they've been doing it, they're getting familiar with it. It does provide It does provide great information, and we don't want to create any unnecessary change. However, for grade three, since this is new, uh, we are using the iReady probes, which allows us to uh put the information directly into iReady. So all of the kids' information, based on the actual iReady um computerized test, plus these one-to-one assessments, will all be in one place. Which is gonna be really helpful, so we'll see how that goes. The other thing we're doing is we're having a fluency, a passage fluency for fourth and fifth grade this year, three times a year. So it's not part of Desi requirements, but it's best practice.
And not to leave with a point, but all of the um assessments are approved. I know Desi had some pretty stringent requirements on what was acceptable for the dyslexia screeners versus what they were not.
So iReady is partially, and then they give you all the things that you have to do in addition to make sure that it is approved. And so that's what we're doing, we're filling in. If it's something like Dibbles where it's all one-to-one, then it would be a highly approved. But because iReady doesn't have, if you don't use the probes or something else, it's all the computerized, which doesn't, like, for for example, phonemic awareness. We can see if a kid can identify a sound, but we can't see if they can make the sound, right? Um, so we're using all those things that are um allowing it to be approved.
Perfect, and the same with Meadowbrook?
Yes.
Okay.
And um while it is not new for elementary, uh, the implementation committee did a lot around standards-based grading. And really figuring out what our priority standards were and kind of shoring this up, so that it's giving the best information for teachers. And also for families, um, so we're kind of re-rolling this out. And uh families will be getting a standards-based grading guide that kind of explains the characteristics that support learning and why we assess those separately from academics. How it's not about averaging, it's about the current level of proficiency, and this is coinciding with uh Power School's standards-based report card. Which we've never really had, uh, we had, we did it through Reddicker, but this is really allowing us to do it in a way that's going to kind of help everyone a lot. Uh, it's a lot more efficient, let me just put it that way.
Uh, last week, we had two hours on Power School, getting in into using Power School, but then also starting to set up your gradebook. And we're gonna continue that uh for most, uh, actually today. Uh, today with the faculty meetings, we used most of the hour to continue that training. So we're hoping that uh people are starting to feel comfortable with that transition, and then we'll have more training.
Perfect segue into my professional development side. Um, so grade three teachers um are starting off foundations with level two um around you uh unit eight. Because they didn't work, because it was new last year, they weren't able to get through the whole curriculum, so to get, start the kids um where they left off. Um, but when they start at level three, they are going to get uh a additional foundation support like they did last year with a liaison um to help them with. Level three. Um, I'm gonna skip down to math labs, I'm just, because I'm very excited about this. We are going to bring in Mike Flynn and Associates to do math labs K to twelve, twice this year. Um, so that if, for math labs are really about um. Lesson planning together, but also there's not, you're not really focusing on a teacher, you're you're utilizing the time to focus on practices. And not only does it help with instruction, but it really helps um teachers see just what kids are capable of doing in math. So it's 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 really transformative, so I'm very excited about that, and uh building thinking classrooms has kind of. Um, come up in some of the schools through coaches and things, so that's, it's connected to that as well. Um, and then the other thing that's not on the slide that I forgot to put on the slide is that we are part of a Witten Wisdom Leaders Program. A national cohort where we're training two people, one is the new literacy coach at Meadowbrook, one I've hosted for a three to five. And that really builds our capacity to then give professional development for Witten Wisdom going forward to onboard people ourselves. So that we don't have to continue to pay outside consultants to do this, um, so that's pretty exciting. And on the seventh and on the thirty-first are two uh full-day PD days. Um, there'll be curriculum-based options, but there'll also be um things along um that are connected to our initiatives like social emotional learning. Universal design for learning, um, and they will be able to choose. And what I've done is, um, there's a lot of different choices, um, I'm not gonna show you the whole spreadsheet now, but um I've tried to repeat things on January third. So that people know if they're thinking of, you know, I want to do these three workshops this time, but I I know I can do these three workshops next time. So that they kind of have this ability to plan for the whole year for what they're going to do for that PD. Um, and it's all connected to um what we're trying to do. And just a shout-out to teachers and leaders, it's a lot, it's exciting, but it's a lot. Um, and uh the teachers have been rising up and to the, not rising up, I shouldn't say it that way. Rising to the occasion, um, and um, you know, providing as much support as we can. Um, but the reminder is always to give ourselves grace, um, because really the way we learn these things is, is the way our kids do. Productive struggle and making mistakes and learning from those, so um we're trying to create that space where everyone knows that no one's going to be perfect. With these curricular materials, probably ever, because it's hard to be perfect in teaching, we are doing an impossible task. So uh, just a shout-out to everyone. Lighting these materials and 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 making sure kids are getting um the instruction that they need.
Good, thank you, Heather. Any questions, comments?
That's a lot for you too, so thank you for continuing to keep us abreast to what's been going on and to keep. Gently pushing the work board in the best interest of students, but also being delicate of the teacher situation, how much they're taking on, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Gordon, we have a carryover from our executive session, a waiver for the policy GCCA slash R. And entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve seven point one request from ELHS to waive policy GCCA dash R requirement of thirty days for pay rate change. As presented.
Excellent motion made by Kate.
Second.
Second by Sarah, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries three to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
And uh, we're gonna put this on hold.
If you don't mind, I like, uh, if Gordon doesn't mind checking the bylaws to see if we can share it, that would be great.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, we have on the agenda nominee EL school committee member to be the LPVEC board on the Board of Directors. We're gonna table that to next meeting. And with that, we have come to the conclusion of our meeting, so uh. Would like to thank Mr. Mackey for his time and efforts today, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
I move to adjourn.
Excellent, motion made by Kate, thank you so much. Second by Sarah, all the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries three to zero, we are adjourned, thank you.